I'd like to call the planning commission comprehensive plan work session to order. Call the role, please. Mr. Granger, Mr. Boswell.
Here.
Mr. Clea.
Here.
Ms. Macbeth.
Here.
Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Schaller.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Okay, today we're here to look at the first draft of the schools and library chapter. Turn it over to Erin to give the presentation today. Thank you. Turn my microphone on. Like we did last time, we went ahead and put the same pages that you all have before you up on the screen so we can kind of go over them page by page. The first section of the chapter deals with the public schools. Not much has changed in this first section since the last plan except for we've added a middle school. And that information is, has been adjusted in that first paragraph. The school ward has not adopted another strategic plan since the 2012 strategic plan. So we've left all of that information the same as it was in the 2013 comp plan.
So fifteen schools, if we've added a middle school, would that make sixteen then? Notice that the numbers added up to.
It might be yes.
There was, I believe, the same age five, also all.
Thank you.
Sorry, it was ten two, says fifteen.
Ten two. Great. Thank you. So the next section, we talked about the schools that are located within the city. And we've added some photographs of those schools. Matthew Whaley Elementary School, a little bit of background there. We talk about the design capacity for the school and then later in the chapter, we kind of get into the discussion about a new elementary school. And the capacity issues that we've dealt with at Matthew Whaley for the past few years. And stop me if you have anything to change or add or update. Berkeley Middle School, nothing changed in that section either. We've added a picture of the school. James Blair, we added that information, added the design capacity of the school and an updated picture of that. And adjusted some information about the central office. It referenced the old James Blair Middle School in the last iteration of the school discussion in the 2013 comp plan. So we've changed that information. Now we get into the fun stuff. The next section, we talk about enrollment and the different schools throughout the county and city-county school system. We've had a slight uptick in the number of students in the city, but not by much. The previous plan, there was a larger growth, but that is kind of also reflected in the population growth trends that we reviewed for chapter three as well. The enrollment in the different schools is reflected in this chart. It's kind of hard to read up on the screen. It's much easier to read on paper or on an iPad. The future growth discussions, we talked about in the presentation we received from the school system. There was discussion about the design of a new elementary school and the construction of a new elementary school. So that's been included in this part of the plan. The 2019 capital improvement plan for the schools, they set aside funding for the design of a new elementary school. And in 2020, or that's for 2020 with construction slated to begin in 2021. But as of right now, there isn't a location or capacity or any information on where or what that new elementary school will look like.
Do you want to hold on discussion until the end or do you want to go ahead and?
No, discussion, page by page is much easier for us to take notes on.
Okay. Just a minor thing, which is just a typo, which is the first sentence of the third paragraph anticipate should be anticipated. But I also wanted to talk about that paragraph a little bit. Future growth is anticipated to be primarily at the elementary school level. Could you explain that a little bit? Because I presume that maybe it happens the elementary school first, but then, you know, we'd be, we'd have the same growth all right up the line, right? Unless there's some reason that we think, if there's a pattern that students drop away after elementary school or something, I just feel like that needs to be addressed a little bit here.
So those numbers are based on what the county provided to us.
Yeah.
And they've identified the need, and maybe the, maybe the sentence should be reworded, the maybe anticipated facilities growth. Leading, leading us to believe that there's, there's some additional space in the upper level schools as far as capacity goes, but.
We're more, we're, we are at a higher percentage of capacity or overcapacity at the elementary school level relative to the middle, high school level.
There's room for growth in the middle and high schools as far as capacity goes, but at the elementary school level, we're at capacity almost across the board.
Yeah, I remember that chart.
So maybe that sentence should probably be reworded to not necessarily mean growth in the number of students, but the.
The next project to be had will be in an elementary school.
At an elementary school level, yeah.
Or something like the most, the nearest term needs for facilities are anticipated to be at the elementary school level. And then maybe even a second sentence that, that actually says. The, of the current nine elementary schools, whatever the number is, seven or eight are at or above capacity. Just something that really lays that out because I do, I remember all too well, the last two times we've had any kind of discussion about redistricting. Questions have been raised about the data and whether it's people simply not trusting or just not knowing what the numbers are. I think the more, the more opportunities we have to provide them to make sure that people understand what the reasoning is, the, the less momentum that kind of objection can get. Because the chart, I remember that we saw, whenever that was, six months ago, was pretty clear. You know, there was a lot of red in that columns.
We'll, we'll work, kind of massage that language a little bit and, and add, add some more information in there about capacity and the next, the next kind of step in growth is more capacity at the elementary school level.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. I, I think this is a place, we talked about kind of maybe moderating the rhetoric in the previous, the, the last two sections. I think this is one where the rhetoric is, if anything, too restrained.
Okay.
My take.
Anybody else? So the next section, we talk about our enrollment figures. And there's a blank slot on this page. We, we work, we're working with the RGIS person. We're going to create a heat map that's kind of based on the neighborhood information you see on the chart on the next page. And it'll, it'll essentially show us where we're gaining students in the city and where we might be losing students in the city. And that, we don't really know whether those students are moving out of the city entirely into the county or into an adjacent jurisdiction, or if they're just moving within the city. But we thought it would be interesting to see, you know, where, where we may have more younger families in the city as opposed to not.
Sounds fascinating. So it's over the years, how many students in each neighborhoods are moving in and out?
Over that five-year window that we review in the, in the, in the chart on the following page. So just to go over that information, we saw the largest increase in the number of students in the Merrimack Crossing neighborhood. And that was an increase of fifty students, which is pretty significant if you look at our overall enrollment numbers. The other areas of increase include Shelly's Square, Quarter Path, Riverside, Richmond Road Commercial Area, Parkway, Townhouses, and Quarter Path Place. And then the largest decrease in students we saw in that same time period was in Skip With Farms with a drop of eighteen, or a drop of sixteen students. And Pine Crest with a decrease of twelve students. Other neighborhoods that saw a drop include Pryersley, Parkway, Yorkshire, Mimosa, Capital Landing Commercial, and York Street Commercial. One of the kind of things I had, was thinking about after we published this was, is possibly taking the chart that we have on the next page. And maybe highlighting those neighborhoods that we've specifically called out with, you know, a color that indicates whether or not they've seen an increase or a decrease.
This would be helpful.
I, I had other, I guess editorial comments or questions about, about the chart. Because I, I found it fun to look at my own street and go, oh yeah, okay, we had nine kids. I know who they were and now there were eight and then there's now ten. Yes, I know who they are. But I found it hard to find my own street and I think that that's, it's not alphabetical. It's not like the most dense to the most sparse or something. Somehow I didn't understand how that was organized. Was it organized in a fashion that like the GIS people made sense of it, but? Yeah, yeah, I mean, because this, that, with, with that kind of a reference, I would have found this okay. But I mean, this is like one of those charts for me with my students of like how to present statistical or information in an, an easy to consume fashion. And this by itself is not an easy to consume fashion. I couldn't find things that I was looking for. And I still haven't found like Burns Lane, which maybe it's near Indian Springs. Oh, there it is, right there. So that's where it is. So this is, so I mean, if they can, if the neighborhood map can be co-located with that, this is fine. Otherwise, I think it needs to move to something that's like alpha order, you know, so people can find.
We can alphabetize, it's, it's an Excel spreadsheet, so alphabetizing it would probably be the easiest way to do it. Right now, it, it's a numerical neighborhood order, which makes sense to us. We definitely understand that, that it might not make sense to somebody who's used to seeing the neighborhood, not used to seeing the neighborhood map. So we'll alphabetize it.
And then the heat map will provide that neighborhood density reflection. Yeah.
The base neighborhood map.
It also would be helpful to explain the, those neighborhood numbers, because I was looking at mine, Holly Hills, fifty-three. It's like, what's that? So just.
That's the average age in Holly Hills.
It's the average age in my house. But, but just an explanation of what that number is.
Of why they're numbered.
Well, yeah.
I would just delete the number. The number provides no information.
Yeah, if you, if you delete it, yeah, if you delete it, that's even better. That seems like a lot of work.
Yeah, it's a pain.
Yeah.
So that kind of concludes that section as far as schools goes. The next section we moved into is the public library. This map was provided to us by the library system, kind of reflecting the, the growth in the campus here on Scotland Street. We gave a little bit of background information. This information is all new. This information wasn't provided in very much depth in the 2013 comp plan. So there's, there's some updated information in here. Talks about the general library system, talks about the campus on Croker Road in James City County and the, the one across Plaza here, as well as the Stryker Center that we're in currently. Because our presentation from the school or from the library system really focused heavily on, on the library campus here in town, that's kind of the direction that this chapter took. And we reflected the, the growth in the library in that map and discussed the additions that were done in nineteen eighty-two and nineteen ninety-eight. We identified the conversation that we had with the library system about the deficiencies in the facility across the plaza from us. Those deficiencies that they listed in their presentation include design concerns, infrastructure, accessibility, and the security of the building. Users also cited limited parking, which is something that we've discussed on a number of occasions. The result of the facility study and recommendations are currently being evaluated. They may, may have updated information by the time we're finished with the comp plan, so we can always circle back to that if we need to. But the focus is, they, they gave us a list of options as far as how to address the, the, the building here in town. And those included renovation, enlargement, replacement of the facility at its current location, or construction of a third library in James City County. Since we've identified this library is a important part of the downtown area, the city should work together to keep the library in the downtown. I forget what the number was, but yeah, there it is. In fiscal year 2019, the downtown library location is expected to have over three hundred and seventy thousand visits. Which is really important to the downtown area. And one of the things that they talked about is that their patrons will come downtown, but they'll also go shopping and go dining and things like that while they're in town. And then we got to our recommendations. For the public schools, we had to assist in the planning and location selection for a new elementary school.
Did we, sorry, did we skip a page?
Did we skip a page?
Oh, I just, maybe I was staring at my gizmo instead of what was on your screen. I, I do, I think this last page is pretty important, just before we get to the recommendations, because the recommendations kind of follow from the conclusions on page ten-eight. And I don't disagree with any of this, but this is also another point where I thought maybe the language could be strengthened a little bit. I think one of the, when, when we heard the presentation from the library, the, a big part of the point was that the, the library being downtown is an economic generator. And, and I think that's important and useful. I, I, I feel pretty strongly that that's a secondary benefit of the educational function of the library, which is to say, our commitment to our library and its infrastructure reflects the community's commitment to public education and educated citizenry. And so that's why I also like lumping the schools and the library together in this document in this way. So I, I just, I, I kind of, I wish that third paragraph, that which is essentially the end of the, of the, this part of the document, didn't emphasize quite so much the fact that the library functions as a feeder of commercial, the driver of commercial activity, right? I think, I think we ought not to be bashful about saying that the library has a civic function too. And its civic function is its most important function. And it's for that reason, not because it drives the economy, that we feel strongly about committing to this important part of our civic infrastructure, I guess.
Yeah. And I, just to follow up on Jeff's great remarks as always, but I was just like, yikes, there's only like two slides on the library. Because it, like, there's so many parts that make the library important and make the future, the next five years decision-making on what we do with the library and a renovation of it or not, you know? And how we support the community center out there that the library is engaged in. So I guess my sense is that we got a big presentation from Betsy and is, are there not more parts of that that should be in here? I mean, I'm not trying to just blow up the word count, but there's just like this more bullet points of emphasis that at least seems to me that we need to have like more than just this one page.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking the same thing, that it seems, it seems kind of short, given, given the importance that certainly all of us and certainly all of my neighbors place on it. I would like to suggest adding safety under the deficiencies, list of deficiencies, that upstairs railing that they were talking about being low is, is one of those, one of those concerns. And to follow up on, on Jeff's comments, I think, I think the place making, the, the concept of place making is, is how this, it relates to, you know? The core of the library is educational and it's, it's important and that's, that's what draws people there. But then, once they're here, then they, they move on to, to get coffee or lunch or whatever, or once they're at the library, they move on. So I, I think that, you know, emphasizing, emphasizing that, that the, the importance of the library then, you know, spreads out.
And it's been a couple of months since we've seen Betsy and her presentation, but my sense is that not just passing us back to you to, you know, capture our comments. And I think that potentially, she had a really good presentation, that I would think that you probably could go back to her presentation and find her different, like, page banners as bullet points and then weave them together into something. And I, I just don't have that, you know, handle, handle here on my iPad, but Caleb looks.
Well, I was just going to say, I remember that presentation being mostly about where the library can grow in its next phase. And I, I also thought that the section on the library was a little bit short, but I wouldn't be hesitant on adding in more descriptions on the deficiencies of the library as it stands now.
Right.
So however you all may draft, I know a lot of that presentation was their research into other libraries across the state and how they're better or more equipped for the twenty-first century. And so I think we should just word it so that we show our appreciation for the library as it stands, while still giving reverence to the fact that it does need to change in some ways, without highlighting points one through twenty of why it might be deficient right now.
No, I, actually, I think Caleb made a really good point, which is that, yeah, we, we don't want to overemphasize the deficiencies. But yeah, I agree with everyone else's comments about, yeah, the importance of emphasizing it as an educational facility and an educational facility for the entire community too, all age groups. It's also one place where you can go sit and work on your laptop without buying a five-dollar coffee. And I think that's kind of important too in a lot of ways. So anyways, yeah, I think emphasizing all of that and then using that to transition into its impact on downtown, whether that's economic or also just in terms of vibrancy of foot traffic and, you know, just a presence of more people in city square in particular.
It's an important part of, sort of the city center.
Yeah.
Part of the Stryker Center.
As well as the programming that the library does that adds to the downtown vibrancy, that's not part of the books or computer space. Because like what we were looking at last week, you know, some of those areas, you know, especially Columbia Williamsburg. I mean, part of the things that we were, you know, saying are important to the community are also things that the foundation is seeking public-private partnerships for funding. And in fact, the library is also seeking some of those funds to support their sort of community programming. So that piece being something that we think is important and then it becomes hopefully, you know, certified up the chain, that that's an important part of what the library does. Then also supports it receiving some of that public-private partnership money.
Elaine, you're, you're on the, the TDF committee. Is that, I, I know about the temporary stage and, and all of that. Is that the kind of thing that's going to require any?
Yeah, that, that's, so that meeting is on Friday.
Is it, I mean, is that a land use, or can they just do it without a?
It's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar piece of equipment, so it's sort of something that is almost the same size as the bookmobile. That can be around to different places, but can be set up in the, in the square here or across the street or someplace in other parts of town. But that, they're, they're looking for money from that.
Erin and Carolyn, a good section to add might be the library's online space. I don't know the exact facts on this, but I can look into it. I remember from Betsy's presentation, I was shocked at how many online classes they offer or programs they offer to the community. And it sort of expanded my thinking of a library as just a physical space to go check out a book, leave and come back with it in a physical form. And she spoke in great detail about all of their offerings in the online world. And so that might be a good addition to add in a third page or another paragraph of saying exactly how much they do online or in programs for the community.
Okay.
I'll try to go back on that presentation and find some examples there.
I would say we have that when we have the presentation and we, and we can always bounce this back to Betsy too and get her additional feedback as well.
Of course, with online, we want to be cautious not to encourage people to use that as an excuse for not funding the, the improvements needed in the, in the physical space to, just, it's to be worded appropriately.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, to me, it's, you know, because they, there's the RB Digital, which is on my iPhone, which is how I can get like online books or, you know, books on tape, but they're on my phone, you know? And, but also that they, they have an app that goes on your Kindle for reading a book, you know, so I mean, there's, they're, they're, to me, it's, it's not a way of saying that we don't need to support the physical library because now we have these things, but it's just that the library is being innovative as, as needed as the community moves forward.
Sorry, just making a note. We'll go back and kind of beef up this section a little bit more and, and go back to her presentation and, and, and see what other additional information. The online information is big and I, and I agree that the, the, the commitment to the city's focus on education will be a great, great way to kind of drive home that point.
Yeah, great.
And I think everyone thinks that what's here is all good and should stay. We just like to expand upon it. Yeah.
We can, we can do that. So if everybody's okay, we'll go on to recommendations. So that we have obviously the, the two sections, the public schools, assistant planning and location selection for new elementary school. That will be coming up rather quickly. Monitor the capacity at Matthew Whaley to eliminate the use of temporary classroom trailers in the next five years with the construction of another elementary school. The special use permit that we have approved for both the current classroom and the new classroom that they'll be installing before the start of this coming school year have an expiration date. And I think the goal should be that, you know, with the construction of the new elementary school, that we're not putting kids in temporary classrooms.
And I think the term of art on, on, in, in the building is learning cottages, is my memory.
Yes, learning cottages. And to continue to provide support and funding to the existing schools. During their presentation, they kind of went over a list of just regular repairs and maintenance and improvements that they plan on doing to the other schools within the system. I didn't enumerate this in that chapter because it, it'll change every year what schools need work done. The next section of, and if there's any more recommendations, we can, we can discuss those now or we can, you all can email them to us as far as the schools go.
I don't necessarily have another recommendation. I'm just really glad that our sort of conversations are echoed in this second point. And appreciate that you put it in there, but it's making me think a little bit about Jeff's comment earlier when we were in the elementary section. And I'm wondering if maybe that paragraph about Matthew Whaley itself could be expanded a little bit, just to reflect the fact that we, they are operating under the special use permit right now and that that does have an expiration and maybe even just a sentence mentioning the trailer so that there's a direct connection between what's in the text of the upper part of the chapter and then how that influences this recommendation.
Yeah, I think that's a great point.
Because I mean, my recollection of those numbers and my recollection of the tenure of the learning cottage and now cottages is that Matthew Whaley has been in, has exceeded its capacity for maybe two comprehensive plans now.
Yeah.
And so I think that now in writing comprehensive plan three, in this condition, that I think that it's only so much we can do, but that, you know, we consider this to be a very serious issue. And that for us, it's a very important issue that we're, that we're very mindful of. And reflecting on that, there's a, a time on the special use permit and all these other things, that that kind of a comment, a drumbeat of that comment, I think is. Is important, because.
I don't know what happened.
Why does it warn you that it's going to hibernate in two seconds?
I don't know. Not fast enough for me to figure out how to use this to make it stop doing that.
Well, just as a way to think about how to sort of drive that point home, having had kids at Matthew Whaley since two thousand and five, I think, five or six, long time, most of that time, Matthew Whaley's been overcapacity. So even just a little sentence that said Matthew Whaley has been at or above capacity for ten out of the last fifteen years or twelve out of the last fifteen years. Because it's been most of the time that there have been trailers back there.
We'll go, I'll go back and see when we, we issued the first special use permit for the trailers back there.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And they'll, it'll have that information in there and then we can kind of give them a timeline in the, in the chapter.
Yeah, but I, I think it's exactly right that we should prepare the reader for that bullet with some, with some data.
It's back. I don't know how, I didn't do that. And we'll go ahead and talk about the recommendations that staff drafted for the public library. To continue to support the library as a community center in downtown, and we can kind of expound upon that if we'd like. Participate in the facility study to determine a path forward to making the library more functional twenty-first century space. That was one of the things that Betsy really emphasized. And, and Caleb just touched on that, you know, that it's not just a place to go pick up books and drop books off, but there's really. there's really a lot more to a public library space now.
Erin, do you think we could add ongoing facility study?
Certainly.
Just so people know that it's, uh, already started?
And then to work with James City County to either renovate or construct in addition to the existing library or construct a new library in downtown. We had a conversation about that, and, and the, really the big emphasis is to try to keep that library in downtown and not, not send it out of the city.
I hesitate to mention this, but I, I think we ought to at least talk about it. Um, one of the things that came up in the, in Betsy's presentation, and that of course is a big part of the, uh, concern, public concern about, um, the, the Goodwin Plaza is parking, and parking at the library, parking in the library lot is important, not just for the library, but also for this building today coming in here, there were very few spaces. I don't know how to, uh, raise the issue of parking in a way that's sort of positive and problem-solving, but it is another sort of factor in here, and maybe that's something that just gets addressed in the slightly expanded discussion of the, of the issues at the library. But I think we don't want to lose sight of parking out here with whatever happens with the library. Uh, a couple of those, a couple of those footprints got a little bit bigger, right? So I think it's just something, since we're, this is the body, that would really have to think hard about parking, uh, here, I think, I think we ought to be maybe writing that in in some way, and then ideally with a recommendation that kind of flows from the data that comes out of the, um, I don't know what to call it, the design report, the design study.
Right, right, yeah.
Uh, because parking was a factor, it was affected in some of those schemes.
And so I think, I think that in fleshing out that part of the chapter, fleshing that out, I think will roll into some more recommendations, but to me, without thinking about how to wordsmith them, there, there should be probably three different bullet points relative to like the first one, one is community, supporting the library as an educational, uh, center or support system to the community, then as an activity center, a center of, you know, cultural and community activities, and then three, the, the parking structure that supports those activities to happen.
Yeah, maybe we call it parking infrastructure rather than structure-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we don't get people thinking it's going to be a new garage.
Right, but I mean, the, those-
That may happen, right?
That's, that's all we have for this chapter.
Yep.
A little shorter than our last few chapters, um, but we will definitely add, um, we'll go back to Betsy's presentation, um, and add some additional information on those three bullet points, and there, there was a fairly lengthy conversation, her presentation about parking, um, and we can also, I think she gave us a copy of the comments that they received when they asked for community comments, and there were a number in there about parking as well.
Yeah.
So we'll look for those.
Any other comments about, well, we have an open forum, and, does anyone who wants to come up for an open forum? Um, so we used both of our meetings this month to do parts of the comprehensive plan. Um, in August, we do actually have a hearing on our regular day, I saw, so we will have a work session the week that follows on whatever is completed at some point, at that point. Uh, and then I guess as a final piece, I just wanted a, a minute of personal privilege to thank Erin for her hard work on this, and wish her, you know, Godspeed and health as she goes off on her maternity leave very soon, we won't see her in August, and we look forward to your return in middle, late fall.
Yes, October.
October, okay.
Best of luck, congratulations.
Thank you.
Best wishes. Stay healthy. And with that, we're adjourned.